And there is nothing impossible with God. And so the great thing of God is salvation. And when you see in 2 Samuel. And when you look into chapter 7 verse 23. And here David says and what is a great thing the Lord had done unto the people of Israel. And what is a great thing? And so the Lord had done a great thing and terrible for their land before the people that rid him out of Egypt. And so you changed your people as your people and for this I give gratitude.
Umriyajana mahe ishreveedukka nigalana janamum unda boologutha jadi galil intha orayi jadi deevat tamakajana mahe meekaratharkum tamakukkiirti vilangapandugiratharkum eepattare deeveri ekithirundu meetukkundu vandha umriyajana thirukum unbaaga bayangaramana periyakariyengalai nadati umriyadeshritikum adhirundu jadi galikum avergal deeverikum mudumaginiyil vilangachidu.
And the Lord saved you and exalted you and given you the excellency in the nation and village and that is a great thing of God. And we can see and what is a great thing the Lord done to the people of Israelites in Deuteronomy chapter 4 verse 32 onwards. And so and when you search over the world and the Lord did not do any great things for the people of Israelites more than anything in all things. Verse 32. And since the day the Lord created man upon the earth and asked from the one side of heaven unto other and whether there had been any such thing, the great thing, and had been heard like it. And so 10 plagues of pestilence came to the people of Egypt. The Bible says and they were all the signs and wonders. In 444 of Deuteronomy we can see this. Also it is said that temptation signs and wonders. And also it is said that and by a war, by mighty hand, by stretched out arm and the great terrace it was mentioned. And so he made the throne of Egypt to shake. And all the magicians and they were trebled. And we can see the finger of the Lord evidently. And the magician could not stand before the miracles. And the Lord killed the firstborn of Egypt. And there was the pillar of fire. And there came a pillar of cloud. And red sea was divided into two. And the people rescued out. And all the enemies were destroyed. And the Lord shivered the manner and finished them. And the water came out of rock. And what does it matter on what does it mean inside? And the day God created man upon the earth and asked from one side from heaven to the earth, a great thing the Lord has done and that is the miraculous thing. And these are the things the Lord done and for therefore salvation. And so to save and to save you, the Lord can kill any person. And to make you to come to the salvation or to save you, the Lord will cast any person out. And for you to be healed and the Lord is well ready to kill any number of persons. And looking unto the speed of the ministry in my initial days and the Lord got ready to kill many persons. And to get speed and to get growth in my ministry, he said that the Lord is able to ready to destroy any persons. And the Lord is fighting with many to save you. And these are the signs, wonders and miracles and great things done for your salvation. But after when you come out of this path and unto the salvation. And what is a great thing at present the Lord is doing. And the Lord has chosen you. And the Lord is speaking to you. And the doctrines the Lord is giving at present is a great thing for you. Verse 33. Deuteronomy chapter 4 verse 33. And right today the Lord is speaking to us. And those who say that I have a personal church and relationship with God, the Lord is speaking today for me. And this is a great thing of God. And devil is speaking. And spirit of your speaks. And the spirit of witchcraft speaks. And the fallen power speaks to us. And the spirit of depression speaks to us. And spirit of suicide speaks to us. And this is not important. And the Lord who created heavens and heavens is speaking to you. The one true God or only true God is speaking to you. And almighty God is speaking to you. And so when the Lord speaks out of fire and the Lord asks questions and is there any people like this? And not only that. And the Lord can perform miracles for your salvation. And you can get sometimes revelations, visions and word of God. And what verse 36 says. And you are seeing the doctrines and this is the lofty experience in Christian life. And the gospel is different from doctrines. And gospel sets free a man. And doctrines makes a man perfect. And gospel gives a man a salvation. And doctrines gives a man a holiness. And what is the power of gospel? And it drags a man or draws a man out of sin. And what does the doctrine do and it cleans the person? 15 3 of John. And what is and the important thing of the doctrine is and when the person is moving it makes him clean. And the doctrine must glow like rain in church. In the church and where the doctrines close not like rain and the church cannot be established. And to whom the Lord gives doctrine. And to whom the Lord reveals a doctrine. And they that forget all need will know. And what does it mean? And not for the babes. And they that come to the next step to the word of God. And so when the child is born and they feed milk. And when time comes and weans milk. And this is a practice in the world. And what does the thing in the Bible? And so for a child to forget or wean milk and it deek a function. Because the child crosses with stage. And so when Isaac weaned and that kept our conduct at great feast. And what does it mean? And you should not stand with the gospel and Jesus saves and delivers and heals, you must come to the next step of doctrine and that is the strong meat. And that's what we can see in Hebrews. And Hebrews chapter 5 verse 13 and 14. And so the strong meat and that it is the discerning power to identify good and evil and that is the doctrine. And so we need doctrines. And we need sound doctrines. And doctrines and to holy godliness. And the Lord who performs signs and wonders and when they came out of Egypt on the way and the Lord practiced them all the laws and statutes to follow. And what do we understand from this and who is like unto our God? If the Lord performs great things and you were often once and the Lord gave you houses and everything and that is a great thing of God. And you were alone but the Lord gave you houses and gates and that is a great thing of God. You are poor, the Lord changed your rich man and that is a great thing of God. And these are all the things unto earthly things. And next what is the earth spiritual thing? And discompleting all your enemies and preserve you. And the Lord conquered your all your burdens. And this is one part. And the Lord saved your soul. And deliverance from sin. And deliverance from curses. And help you to obey to doctrine of baptism. The fire from heaven says that the Lord gave you anointing. And with anointing and the Lord spoke to you through many verses. And these are all the things the Lord hath done great things for you. And these are pastimes. And now the Lord says and the Lord is doing or does great things. Book of Job. 5 Amorikarum, chapter 5, verse 9. Even right today the Lord is living a work with life. And the Lord said, I did and I am living already. And the Lord did not do only the pastimes also he is doing in present time. And the Lord not only done to the people of Israelites, he is doing to me also. How many can say this? And the Lord is doing every day and the things that the great things unsearchable and marvelous things without number. And what does it mean? And right today and the Lord when you lift you up or exalt you, that is a great thing of God. Verse 10 says. And so and the Lord sit on high those that are low and those bound that are exalted to safety. It is a great thing of God to change your lowly estate. And you were under dust. And you were under the dawn. But the Lord helped us to sit with princes. And he made us to sit with the saints of God. And whose blessed thing it is. And by grace or audaciously the Lord has given this excellent experiences which our relatives, our friends did not receive. And the Lord is sufficient for you in everyday life and that is a great thing of God. And you know how many enemies rose against us. And so you would have an outwardly and outwards enemies and you are crying and shouted and lamented and cried and fasted for them. And but there are many invisible enemies and powers and they are working against you and your children. But what the Lord is doing for us. And the Lord brings all the enemies that you can see and destroy and he is destroying all the powers that you cannot see that is invisible to our eyes and he is destroying them. And what does a cat do? And when it was laying its again. And it will go and take the mice. And taking it. And it will not kill it. And so it will not kill and provide the food. And so it makes half dead. And it gives to the young ones. And so now and they will struggle and they will eat it. And this is the concept of God the Lord does for us. The problem that you are not able to encounter, the Lord breaks into pieces and brings unto your feet to crush it. And that is a plan of God. And so when you when you get the fury and zeal of God and the Lord brings the enemies to destroy. And the Lord revealed a matter to me in a story. And so the Lord will not test a person beyond the limit or extent. And also said that when the Lord permits such trials in their life and he gives them a way to escape. And so we are reading the Lord will have or keeps us a loop line. But we are not able to encounter these problems and trials. One said like this. And so one said and 24 hours Jesus was crucified, hung on the cross but I am hanging on the cross for 24 years. And that is a wrong word. And even when you hang on the cross was 110 years and it is not equal to the time that Lord hung on the cross for 24 hours. And why you are encountering or when you are hitting the problems? And so the limit of measure and that it was made in. And so the limit of measure it's your calling. And that is a vision of God. And that is a calling of God. And that is a plan of God concerning you. And the limit or measurement of your measure is that your calling. When you see. And when they become a police or when they come to the military, when they become an officer, they will give them a training. And how they got training when they came for the training and so even when they come to the officer level and they must pass through. Even in the ministry he has this. And after serving the God for 20 years or 24 years and they will be promoted as assistant pastor and that is the officer training. And I got such training. And I got training from seven centre pastors. And assistant pastor will not have any freedom or independence and even the young brothers or in charge brother they have. And I had training from seven pastors. And only after getting perfection, I came to the next posting. And so every pastors were in different designs. And so I have to pass through every designs. And likewise in the military also, they have training for the officers. And when Brother Pejo said. And there is officers training academy at Mount. And so from Changel Pet to Mount they must run. And what is their age? At the age of 45 and from north and they will deliver them to the Saint Thomas Mount and from Changel Pet and they have to run to Saint Thomas Mount. And there is no mercy for them. And when you faint on the way and they will give you water and they will wake you up again, you must run and so only then and they will give you the fitness. The Lord is taking and sits path and also taking us in this path. And the Lord led Job in a beautiful way. And it is not a normal thing, the Lord has done great things for us. And every day the Lord is taking over. And the Lord. And they that afford Mount the Lord lifts them. Even today the Lord does this. If the Lord wants to do great things in our life, it is essential for us to surrender and submit. And the Lord does marvelous thing without number and also unsearchable and great things. And so the coming days and will be the great things for the Lord to manifest and to put forth in our life. May God's holy name be glorified. The Lord did. The Lord does. And the Lord will do. How many of you believe this? Now let us come back to Joel, chapter 2, verse 21. And so also and when we are giving the thanks and we got this word and also the prophecies and two or three will utter these words. And when they are uttering these words and the people will rejoice and clap their hands and sing with joy and so what is a great thing the Lord does in our life? And so what is the law, what is the thing the Lord is going to do in the land, in your future, in your life? And fear not, O land. Be glad and rejoice. For the Lord will do great things. And what is the right meaning of it? There are five things. And first thing and the Lord sends former rain and latter rain. And second and third thing and the Lord fills your bounds and also the oil overflows. And your bounds will overflow. And oil overflow and run it over. Fourth thing. And so what you have lost in your life and what you have gone away and it will come back to you in double fold. And you can see on. And the fifth thing and my people never be ashamed. And so you can see this in book of Joel, chapter 2, verse 21 to 26. And so if the Lord is doing a great thing for a person, the Lord gives him former rain and latter rain. And so in man's life there are two rain or needed. And one is former rain and another is latter rain. On the day of Pentecost, the former rain descended into the house. The anointing in the days of the coming of the Lord is the latter rain. And the days when you got saved and that is the anointing call, a former rain. The anointing descending on the days of the coming of the Lord, a rapture is the latter rain. And what does the 23rd verse says? And the former rain moderately he will cause to come down for you, the rain, the former rain and the latter rain in the first month. And right anointing is the great thing of God. And so he will give you the former rain, cause to rain moderately. The path that you are living. The problems that you encounter. And all the sickness that is encountered you. And evil spirits working against your soul. According to the path that you go and the Lord gives you anointing. And that is a great thing the Lord is going to do further. How many are going to get this experience today? And Joel, chapter 2, verse 21 is the real allegory. And we do not know what is the thing inside it. And so what is the expectation of the Lord doing for the great thing is that you must expect a former rain from him. And when we say anointing, it must completely or it must continue within. In some places rain falls and we all know. Also in some places and there occur floods. Also we can hear some and in many places and there were heavy floods. In some places it results. In some places there were heavy rain. In some places it is not like this. And so when he says that and the ground were rent. Can you understand? And the clouds are rent and then and there itself, the whole water falls into it. And today we can see the former and he saw the sea. And he was watering. And when you ask them. And used to say, it rains and I will take the harvest. And that it is the latter rain. And so and when one water falls and when one rain comes and even it irrigates and he can take the reap or harvest. And that it is the latter rain. And the anointing and it must rent the heavens and must come down. And when the right anointing descends into konavatam and we can shake well. But many are not coming to the point of anointing. It's not like that. And that is very important time. You and God. And this is the time for you to come unto God and get the power and must crush and the ang ladder and line. And what is the second great thing? And the flows shall be full of wheat. And the Lord will meet all your needs and abundance. And you cannot, don't want to borrow money. And getting exchange of money. And telling that give today, I'll give it tomorrow. And so and there is no rotation in the blessings of God. Can you understand? It is not the plan of God to exchange from here and to transfer here and there. And so many are thinking like this, it's wrong. And so the prophet and he got money. And so the Lord give him of the blessings. And the Lord said and first you must sell it and you settle all your money and then you can live. And so there is no rotation in the Bible and in the truth of God. And it is said that and your flows shall be full of wheat. And it is very need for for us. And the Lord must meet all your requirements. That's what I am telling from beginning.
And you do everything for God in your life every day.
And you are doing certain things for you, you are making up yourself, designing, you are laboring hard, you are moving around here and there.
In midst of all these things, you serve God. And so what is the word of God the Lord gives you today? Not only the Lord says, "Stand and see." 33:3 of Jeremiah. And here after, the Lord is going to make you know a great and mighty things with thou knowest not. The Lord did. The Lord do. The Lord will do. You are going to stand and see what the Lord is going to do for you. And also the Lord says, "And I will make you know and what are the things I am going to show you and know for you." But you must call unto me. And right today onwards, you develop your prayer life. How you renew your prayer life? And some are coming unto me and asking to give them a good sleep at night if you are not able to sleep and stay and pray. And they deliver a child. And used to say, "They cannot sleep at nights, it is good for you and you can watch and pray at night." If it cries whole night, what is the thing? And so the meaning is, "A mother, I was born," and from right today, you bend your knees and pray. And you created me which I know not, and you have to pray for me from today, and so this is what Jesus said, "Pray for you and your children." And so it would not leave you until you pray and obey for it. And you must pray. The Bible says, "You call unto me and I will make you know a great things." And so on the former days we can see, and there is no other person like Pentecostal people, but we cannot see such person at present, those sleep like the Pentecostal people. And myself and brother, and I were going in a car. And so when I was at south, and so from Chennai we were returning to. And the believer and pastor and the God slept at that side. And I am also sleeping and praying. And so it came and stood near toll. And so they gave money in the toll. And so the driver slept and before he gives money in the toll. And so if he drives a car further and without it, and we have to get toll for everyone. And I said him to stop the vehicle and I got team. And they are singing songs louder, and so they are playing music, and even amidst of that sound, and they were sleeping, I thought that even in the office. And you called them to me. And so I will make you know the things that you know not and you are unsearchable. I am waiting to give you the things that show forth, that know not and mighty things, and you must call unto me. And what is the thing that I will show forth, the great things? And one about your house? And secondly about the healing? And second, thirdly about your future? And fourthly about your things? And fifthly about the excellency in future? And sixthly about your spiritual life? Seventhly, the Lord says, "And I will accomplish and what I have make you to do." And so when you read the verses below. And so thirty-three fourth verse says that concerning your houses. Sixth verse says about your health. Seventh verse says, "I will turn your captivity and you will have a bright future." Eighth verse says, "And I will pardon you and give you a forgiveness." Ninth verse says, "And I will give you praise, honor and name, I am going to change your future bright." And the Lord says, "I am going to tingle the voice of joy, voice of gladness, and voice of bridegroom, voice of bride, and voice of them that sees, and praise the Lord of hosts." Just simply when you say, "The Lord is going to great things," and it is not a thing, and the Lord is going to reveal and what are the great things in your life. And so the Lord is going to speak about your family and your house and family about you. And so you are saying that I am sick and I am under the diseases, and the Lord says, "And I will restore your health and healing." "I will change your captivity and return on how you were in the former days." "I am going to sanctify you and pardon you." Not only that. And I am going to make you my name, a joy, a praise and honor before all the nations. And so what will be the voice here after? And there will be the voice of rejoicing. And this is the great thing. And what are the voices will be heard? And here after in your house in your life, and this will be the voice, the voice of joy, the voice of gladness, the voice of bridegroom, and the voice of the bride, if you are a bride, and you can hear the voice of the bridegroom. And also you will say, "Praise the Lord of hosts, for the Lord is good and his mercy endures forever." And verse fourteen says, "And I will fulfill the good thing or promises." The days come. "I will perform the good thing for you." When you pray, and the Lord will reveal it and will fulfill it. May God's holy name be glorified. Not only this. And I am repeating everything. The Lord will do. And the Lord did. The Lord is doing. And the Lord will do. And you stand and see what they do for you. And I will proclaim and see what is going to do. And nextly in a different way. And he shall do great things. And not for someone, the Lord is going to do great things through you. First Samuel. Chapter twenty-six. Verse twenty-five. An enemy of father-in-law and looking unto the son-in-law has said like this, "And thou shalt do great things, and stand and prevail, and he shall do a great things." And he who came to kill him, the Lord gives him a blessing. And what is that? And my son, thou art blessed. Thou shalt do great things. And he who is anointed, the Lord is going to grow great things through you, and he shall do great things. And then after, there comes an end for Saul. Only then after, and David climbed to the throne. From right today, and he shall do great things. And this is time for the enemies of what they found that comes. And you must do for God. If you are anointed person and you will work for God. Are we qualified? And so are we qualified to do things unto God? A prophet had looked at a person and cried like this. And said that, and so I got vexed and weary, and so why do you cry? And looking unto the great things that you are going to perform, I cry. And I am a dead dog, and what I am going to do? And what is that? Second Kings, chapter eight, verse thirteen. And Hezekiah said that, "And what what I serve as a dog, that he should do a great thing." But the Lord, and he said, "And the Lord has going to do a great thing through you." And whoever you may be, and you may be a lowly state, and you may be a miserable person, but the Lord is going to do great things through you. And Hezekiah, and he was a normal warrior. And then after, he became a captain for the king. But one day he got a word. And so when he got a word, he asked, "And how can I become a king?" And next day, how he was? And he became a king. And he asked, "And I am a dog, are you going to do great things through this dog?" But next day, the Lord lifted him and did great things through him. And you may be stumbling, and you may be fall, and different kinds of ways and path, but the Lord sees, and from right today, I am going to do great things through you. And what is the exciting great thing the Lord performs? And it is a great thing that we got seen. Secondly. And Lord's great thing. The Lord is going to construct or build up a house. There is a great place in heaven, that is a great thing. And salvation is not important, and perfection is very important. Second Samuel. Chapter seven. Verse twenty-one. According to thine own heart and has done unto great things to make thy servant know them. And what is the great thing? Verse eleven says. And I will make a house for you. And so hearing this verse, and he was shaken. And he has many matches with the house. And what is the thing the Lord said, "And I will build up a house for you, at your house," and so what is a house which is mentioned here? And who is the only person and who said a word about heaven is David. And now the Lord said to him, "And I will build up a house." And here in this is said, "And there is no more prayer." And said that, "And after a long time, and you make a word to tingle in my ears, and that is sufficient." And read verse nineteen. And thou hast spoken thy servant's house for a great while to come, and this is the man, rough man, and so what worth I am to do this? Verse twenty. Though I had many failures in my life, and David said, "And there is no other thing great thing you are going to do in my life, and you promised to do or fulfill in my life." And so salvation is not important, and perfection is very important. It is not a great thing to come to this congregation, and we have to enter into the whole congregation of heaven. And we have to join with the people there that got perfection. And the Lord who called you and done the great things for you, and he will take you to the heavenly house or heavenly canon and will take you unto glory. Let us all close our eyes. And the Lord prepares a great thing for us. And though that is the work of that without hands. Sure house. And the time that is after the great while of time. And even many servants of God, they are telling, "And this is the number of my house." And so I am able to hear this. And thereof servants of God, they say very surely, and among hundred and forty-four lakhs thousands, they says that, "And this is the number of my house." And do you know where is a house in Jerusalem? And so I am such beauty house, and where you will stay? And so in twenty-one Revelation, it says that, "And it is the job of the whole city." And there is a house for you. And check which is your house? And what is the present state of your house? And David says. And thou said, "And I will build up a house for you, and that is sufficient and enough for me." And that is a great thing of God. And I'll come. I will gather you unto me. And this is a promise unto the church, the Lord says, "And I will take up to the place which I promised you." And so I have nourished my family and church and did all these things, this is not a great thing, I will build up the great house for you, and that is a great thing of God. And the Lord did great things for you. And we are joy, and we are glad. And what is the thing happening now? And the Gentiles must say. And the Lord hath done great things for them. And how many of you desire this? It's not a thing that we say and we lament. It is not a great thing. And they that are around you must see, and the Lord hath done great things for them. And your relatives must see. Your friends must see. And your village must see. The place where you are working, they must see. And why, your gentiles, your enemies must see, the Lord hath done great things for them. And today, our God come in our midst as a God of doing great things. And they that believe and lift up and glorify our great God. And the Lord saved us. I know it is. And kept us to be the partakers and the signs of light. And right now, the Lord is doing great things for you. And fear not. And do well the great things for you. A late rain will come and miss you. And thou shalt become a blessed. And what your laws, you will restore. My people never be ashamed. And you are going to stand and see. And the great things the Lord has done for you. And they that believe keep praising God. Call unto me. I will make you know a great things. Your future. The future of your children. And future of your ministry. And I will make you know everything. I will give you healing. And I am the Lord Jehovah, give you healing. I am the healer. I will bring you healing and strength. I am going to do great things through you. And now we are going to end up with anointing. And what's that anointing? The anointing to do great things through you. The anointing to Lord to make know new the great things. The anointing to stand and see, the Lord's great thing. The anointing to make you sure, I have a place in heaven. And how many are in need of such anointing? Our God is a great God. And the Lord is going to do great things. And surely the Lord is going to great things and manifest you. And receive that anointing.
Amen, amen.
In this preaching, and what is the word that belongs to you? The Lord did great things. Is the word, "The Lord did great things." And he does, or he is doing the great thing at present. Oh, the certain word, "The Lord will do great things." Are you saying that this is the word, that I shall stand and see the great thing of God? Are you saying that this is the word that belongs to me, and he said that, and the word that known I will let it in? Are you seeing the word that the Lord said, "And he shall do the great thing?" Are you saying, "That is a great thing, the Lord is going to build up a house in the heaven for me?" And the Lord descended amongst us, and he is doing the great thing for us. And from right today, the Lord saying will be the great thing for you.
Amen.
And Hezekiah asked unto God, "And what did my dog to do the great things?" And so when he humped himself. When the grace of God filled him. The Lord did great things through him. How many of you are delivering and submitting unto God? Oh, people of God, and there is a great thing for the Lord to perform through you.
Amen. Amen. Amen.
There is a place for me in heaven. And there is a throne for me in heaven. There is a crown for me in heaven. And surely I will attain it. And David was confirmed about this. And so in the initial stage, and he was in a confused state. And he was in waiting list. Because when he committed mistake. When he stumbled in his ways. And he got fear. And Lord, take me not the Holy Spirit from me. And cast not me in my prayer. And refrain me not from your praise. And cast me not from your presence. But when the anointing was renewed to him. And the Lord confirmed him. There is a place for you. And what a beautiful God our goddess. He who was standing on knees, do not fear, there is a place for you. And there is a place for you in him. And be courageous. The Lord is going to do great things. and he that called you is faithful there is a crown
amen
how many are having this certainty and simply you should not say what I say I was somewhere I was on dust on earth and he brought me from that place I am weak I am fool and I am the person who did above minimal things but the Lord who called me is holy I am not faithful he is faithful there is a purpose for the Lord to bring me surely he will take me to that place and that is a great thing
amen hallelujah
and so don't think that the Lord will do something you cannot return back and with knees and you sing the song with belief and surely I will attain I have a crown no enemy can come and harm this and from the Lord's hand I will receive the midst of the angels
amen
and the struggles that you face right today the problems or situations that you go through today and the sickness and sickness that you face today all these and the devil is bringing that you should not enter into that house not I will go there I will receive a crown myself from my Lord's hand challenge devil and say this
kidaikum nichaya
and surely you will attain
greedam yanake
crown for me
hallelujah hallelujah